Ooh, quiet. Okay, it's that time and time for our board workshop. So I want to welcome everyone here tonight. It's great to see you and to be with you. And we're going to start our meeting tonight by having Ms. Julie Powell lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, we will get started. And our first item of business is about safety and security. And it's our risk management update. And we're going to ask Ms. Chadley Bodley to come up and Mr. Rich Swanson to talk to us about this. And Ms. Bodley is an Assistant Superintendent and Rich is Risk Management Director. So, thank you.
President Gerard, Superintendent Linford, we're excited to be with you today. I don't know if excited's the right word, but we're glad to be here. As you know, Rich has been a building principal for years and he has a lot of expertise. And he's definitely shown that expertise as he's become the Director of our Risk Department for the last several years as well. So I'm going to just turn the time over to him to let him talk through the things that they are working through, through our Risk Department with all of the different areas. And then he's got even a demonstration for you today. So this is going to be great.
Right, yeah.
Absolutely. Thank you. President Gerard, Vice President Price, esteemed members of the Board, Superintendent, it's great to be with you, to be able to spend a little bit of time on some of the school's safety. And we've branched this out a little bit this year on safety, not just our building safety that we might generally talk about, but a couple of our other areas within risk management that we deal with, with our health needs of students and keeping students safe that way. And then also in dealing with some of our environmental needs that we have within our district and how we accomplish these tasks. Are we coming up? Well, just as a note while he waits to do that, I was in a meeting with Mrs. Bodley this morning and she expected standing room only when they had she and I on the agenda. So it was as she thought and as she planned.
There's still time.
As she walked out, she gave a smile and said, "Man, everybody is so excited to hear about school's security today." I felt like there was some facetious, a little bit of sarcasm. But in our risk management and school safety, again, just breaking this down and want to quickly go through, there's a lot of different areas here. So please, I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have, but just going to quickly bounce through, again, health precautions, some of our environmental protections, and then what we're doing with students and staff within our facilities for safety. First off, in our, in our Health Department, in our Health and Nursing Services, Jen Nelson is our Supervisor of Nursing and does an absolutely fantastic job. We have a total of 26 school nurses here within the district. And then we have 62 healthcare clerks, one in each of our elementary schools. They work on a daily basis, going through a lot of different things, meeting the medical needs of our students, they're doing the yearly updates of all the students' healthcare plans, updating all of their medications, having current doctor orders for what can be administered to students in the school and throughout the school day, as well as those emergency medications that a student might need. They also are responsible for training, all of the teachers, the staff in those buildings, to make sure they're aware. So it's not just one person that's there to treat that student, but it's a whole team of people within that building. All of our school nurses have between three to five different schools that they're in. And so they make that training as broad as they can to make sure that we're meeting the needs of those students. Also, they're working very closely with Davis County Health Department, with things like, we already had a presentation earlier with our school administrators on measles and concerns with possibly measles outbreaks and what that would mean, trying to get ahead of that, notifying parents, what that would look like, what we would need to do, not only from the Davis School District point of view, but also from the Davis County Health Department and their running of things within our district and our county. Also overseeing immunization compliance. They've been doing vision screenings for quite a while. They've just this year taken on hearing screenings as well. So they stay very busy as they move around between many different schools. I thought a couple of the different data points here were very interesting. And I wasn't aware of these to this extent. 327 students in our district that were helping on a daily basis with type 1 diabetes. I personally never would have guessed that that number was that significant. But do a fantastic job on the daily in and out needs of these wonderful students and also helping their parents to feel safe while their students are in our building, in our care. There's 305 students with seizure disorders, 808 students severe allergy. With that, epinephrine, which we supply to each school each year. Last year, the emergency epinephrine for allergies was administered nine times, two times to adults, seven times to students within the district. 1,161 students with asthma, 432 students are receiving medications prescribed by the doctor but under supervision of the nurses in the buildings on a daily basis. 573 emergency orders. Those would be things like a student that might have a seizure disorder, and if they go into a seizure and they need an emergency medication, that could be life-saving for them. There's 573 of these doctor orders that we have within our buildings. And again, a lot of vision screenings. I went forward one. Let me come back. Really quickly on the environmental safety, Brandon Peck is in our office and oversees these areas. We have yearly asbestos updates, construction abatement. Whenever our amazing architectural team here within the district plans a rebuild, a remodel, a change-up, Brandon is responsible to go out and check, make sure that we're not in conflict with asbestos lawn requirements. And then also he, he updates, and we have a book in every building and every school that's updated on a yearly basis with any asbestos notifications. Submitting of the yearly emergency preparedness plans to the state, mold remediation, AEDs, the yearly maintenance on those, as well as installation in new buildings, water sampling corrections. This was a large thing that we just went through as a district. We sampled 18,000 water faucets through our district in the last couple of years. Now we are 100% remediated. So there are no faucets within our district that are currently reading below danger levels for lead within our buildings. Yearly safer out updates, which is one that we're, we're working on and that's one that we've got to do a better job with. And then elevator and lift, which again requires yearly updates. Safety and security, Blake Haycock, who you normally see out in the front here. His responsibilities within the office go along with SRO trainings. He meets with all the SROs in our, in our schools on a monthly basis, goes over concerns, trends, things that we're seeing, as well as talks about focus areas that we might have from our superintendency and our district leadership. Local Police Department liaison, it's a wonderful thing. Whenever something happens in a city, Blake's getting calls on Friday night, Saturday night, Sunday night, making him aware of things, many of which don't really pertain to our schools or our students, but because of that relationship with all of our police departments, he, he's able to speak with them through concerns that could be coming up. Works with our standard response protocols. One of the things that passed in the state a couple of years ago was that statewide, we're now on the "I love you guys" standard response protocol. The state was really excited that this is now a statewide priority in, in having this be an emergency response. Davis School District now is going on, I think 15 years that that's been our protocol within the district. So we've been 15 years running the "I love you guys" foundation and standard response protocol that the state has just adopted statewide within the last couple of years. You can see there's many other things that, that he works through on that. Again, happy to answer any questions that you might have. Getting to the meat of, of this in talking specifically to school and student safety, wanted to take a couple of minutes and go over our House Bill 84, which was a legislation, the sweeping legislation for school safety reform two years ago. Last year, we had House Bill 40 that was kind of a cleanup bill to clarify some of the things that were in House Bill 84 from the year previous. And now we also have Rule 698-13, which is now trying to help us define more clearly what House Bill 40 has put into place. And so want to go specifically into some of these things, where we're at as a district, where we're moving as a district, and then happy to answer any questions that you might have. First off, on the 2029-2030 requirement, schools have to implement video surveillance of entrances. That's something that we completed many years before this was even in a discussion point across the state. We've had great district leadership that seen the importance of that and they've put money and time towards secure vestibules, video in our, in our entrances of our buildings. Internal classroom locks, and I'm going to talk a little bit more about that in a minute. Bleed kits, first aid kits, and exterior cameras. Again, the exterior cameras, we've, we're on top of that as well. For 2035, the limited entry points. Again, that's coming to our secure vestibules, which we've already done. It's a big, going to be a big funding item for many districts across the state. Happy that's not one that we have to tackle now, as we were very forward-thinking in that. Exterior windows surrounding the interior, or expanding the entryway, so that's those secure vestibules. We need to have security glazing, which is still in some conversation of what exactly that's going to look like. Interior windows around classroom doors are a requirement by 2035 as well. And those need to have a ballistic glass or now as defined by rules, a glazed window, which they're defining, the state is defining that glazed window. It still can be the film that we've been using in the past. However, there are new specs on what the density and the thickness of that film would have to be on our buildings before 2035. So we're still kind of working through, that's a, that's going to be a very expensive one. That's one that will be into the many, many millions of dollars by the time we're starting to get, and get some more clarity on what we're looking at with the ballistic film. And then ongoing compliance, continuing to check on the things with our, our needs assessments that we're doing as a school, which was required previously every year. They changed last year that those needs assessments are now required every three years in every building. So one of the things that you might hear a little bit about that has been some changes, our 698-13, which is the clarity of the rules based on House Bill 40. Schools must maintain, must establish and maintain managed points of entry to control access to the building. All exterior doors, all exterior doors should be locked no more than 10 minutes after the first bell until the last bell of the day. So all of our exterior, and when I put in here that we're working through some of the consequences with this. For instance, now, I was at a school a couple of weeks ago. The PE teacher, the PE coach was, was doing a great job and he had one door propped open with a great big rock out of the auxiliary gym, because that auxiliary gym was hot. And so I removed the rock and I set it down as I was walking across. Right as I got to the next door, coach pushes that open and comes walking out with a big rock. Right as I got to the next door, and we had to clarify that this now is specific in-state law that all exterior doors have to be locked from 10 minutes after the first bell until the end of the day. There's some unforeseen things that we're still working through and we'll need some help with our wonderful area directors to clarify problematic areas. For instance, portables become, become a concern. You almost have to have a person sitting on the door all day long. That's considered an exterior door. How do we man that? What do we do with that? But that should be shut and locked throughout the entire school day. The other one where, where there's been a lot of feedback, trying to understand, and it hasn't been happy feedback to me, has been classroom instructional area doors shall remain locked and in a fully open or closed position while school is in session. And so the door doesn't have to remain closed during instruction, but the door handle on that classroom should be locked if the door is open so that it just requires a push of the door to shut and engage the lock. And then they specifically in that go into magnets, that we cannot use magnets on any of our school doors. This has been a real adjustment and I have to say somewhat embarrassed. As I've said, we can't do magnets and teachers aren't quite sure how they're supposed to teach without a magnet. So it's been a real change. It's actually been in law since 2018 under fire code. And now they've just moved it from fire code. I had no idea. And in fact, I've told principals in the last couple of years, "Yeah, that's great. Go get your magnets." So I was encouraging them to, to go against fire code. Now they've been very specific with, with our 698 in clarifying that we cannot have magnets or anything that prevents the locking mechanism from going into place. The last item on there is the classrooms. We received a grant last year for $2 million. We're in the process currently of changing out the classroom door locks on every classroom in the district with that $2 million. That lock will look like this lock here. You can see that it is unlocked, so the teacher could have that classroom door shut in an unlocked position if they have a student that goes to the bathroom. And then all they do is push the button and it notifies them that it's locked. They're not having to get out keys to put in to open or close. Now the law reads, again, that door has to remain locked in an open or closed position during the school day. These are the locks that we're in the process of installing on every classroom in the Davis School District, which is going to be great for not just the safety and security, but we have some schools that, I, I talked to one principal today and said, "Now, do you have the round handle?" And they said, "No, we're 1960s school, so we have the square handle." And so this will now make us ADA compliant on all of our classroom doors as well. And that's a project that, that our wonderful folks are working on, getting to all of our classrooms. Now, in what we're doing, a couple of different things that, that we're working on this year. First off, the Safety and Security Department is doing unscheduled walkthroughs of all of our buildings. We're checking exterior doors. We're checking any concerned areas. Again, the first thing that we can do to keep our, our schools safe is to limit access into our buildings. First and foremost, above and beyond anything else we could talk about, any other ideas put into place, keeping our school campuses secure and keeping people that shouldn't be in our buildings out of our buildings is the first thing. So we're doing these walkthroughs. We do five to 10 buildings a week, sit down and meet with the principals to go over concerns that we might see to work through solutions or directing them back to their area director on ideas that they can come up with together to resolve that. And then we all, and then we submit a friendly. If they need, if work orders need to be put in, we take care of that. We're not putting more on the principal. We're discussing what they think they need, what we think. And then our department is putting in the work orders to try and get that work taken care of in, in consultation with that school principal. This then comes into a beautiful chart, which we can show you at a later time, that shows what we're seeing in our schools, what are the main concern areas kind of that might be across our campuses, what we're spotting. Now, we're doing this just as a friendly, let's get on top of this. The state now, through the Department of Public Safety and the School Safety Center is coming in and they're doing these, these report walkthroughs on our buildings. They've done five or six so far. And it comes back with about a 10 to 12-page report that is then submitted to the State of Utah Department of Public Safety, School Safety Center. And they're fantastic reports. I've been very impressed with the ones that I've seen so far. But we're trying to walk through, identify, find some of the concerns ahead of time that we can just take care of internally before it needs to be written by the Department of Public Safety. And so that's becoming a, a large focus, something where we're spending a lot of time this year. Some emergency response equipment and outdoor security, just to answer a couple of questions on this. One of the things that you saw was required by 2029-2030 on there was bleed kits and tourniquet kits. We were notified last year in January that the School Safety Center is buying those for the entire state of Utah. And so they've already put out an RFP, they've awarded the bids on those and we're waiting to get that, that, those kits in our building. So the bleed kits, first aid kits, the first aid kits are going to require us to keep some yearly maintenance, to keep things up. And as, you know, the Band-Aids and the Gauze and the different things are used, we're going to have to continue to put some money into that, which should be very minimal. And then the tourniquet kits, those are pretty intense. Each classroom has four military-grade tourniquets in each classroom in our district. So that will be a pretty intense kit that, that we'll be receiving. Playground fencing, and those next two go together. Part of the, of the 2033, 2034, 2035 is the fencing or staff supervision. That's something that we are ahead of, again, in our district where we have supervised recess. Supervised staff is out on the playgrounds with our students already. So we haven't spent a lot of time looking into the fencing, into the fencing where we also have a lot of shared space and agreements with our cities. But we do currently have our staff supervision on all of our campuses, so we're compliant with that currently. Just a last couple of quick things. Panic Alert System is another thing that, that has been required. The state has said in January that they would be paying for the Panic Alert System as well. We were actually, had just gone through an RFP process that was coming back at around a $5 to $6 million cost to just Davis School District to do the panic buttons. The state has an RFP that should have closed about two weeks ago. And then after that, they're supposed to be issuing a statewide panic alert. The best panic alert system that really is out there, we have in many of our buildings already, the Audio Enhancement Epic System. And we're, we're running that in many of our buildings currently and continuing to update schools as we go along. And we'll see what, what the state provides there. Law enforcement, access to surveillance. We've, we're already on top of that in the access key boxes. We have those for our, for our law enforcement, for our fire responders. Also, all of our police departments have the card access badges. So any of our police departments from any of our cities can come into our buildings in emergency at any time with the card access. With the armed guardian, one of my favorite topics, school, we have three options with armed guardian within the building. We can have extra resource officers. If this were even our goal, that we wanted to have extra resource officers, many of our cities don't have the employees and the number that they could provide that. Our, our city partners, our police department and sheriff's office are fantastic to work with. They're always looking to find employees as well to fill roles within their law enforcement. This would be a challenge. The armed security officer would be a second option that we could have in place for our guardians. The numbers that I'm receiving, and I've worked with it, well, I've spoken with the School Safe Center who said they think they can get me different numbers. When I've looked at bringing in just outside services, providing outside services to provide that for us, I've been given numbers of $20 to $25 million per year to have that provided by an outside company. And I've also been told there aren't any companies large enough to run a Davis, to do a Davis School District, so that would be many companies to take care of us. And then lastly, our school guardians, school employees who volunteer for the program. That, that, they can only be in if they receive administrator approval. They have to have their valid concealed carry permit. They have to have mental health screening prior. And then they have to complete the school guardian training. There's a lot of pieces, one thing that they've helped us with on this, we were told previously that we had to do the mental health screening on a yearly basis at the cost of almost $400 per employee, per employee, per year. In House Bill 40 and, and rules from that, they've now said that it's the same as law enforcement. They still have to have the mental health screening. And then they don't have to go back for a second mental health screening unless there's a for cause that, that brings a concern. And so it's a $400 one time per person and then ongoing, it will be just as needed within the schools. So what we've done, we, we put this out last year. We, we had a lot of wonderful employees that volunteered and are working through. We don't, well, we have a lot of wonderful employees. We still to be 100% compliant with this. We would still need more employees and more schools to volunteer to be part of the school guardian program. The process that we're in currently is we're starting to get this information back out to school principals. Currently, the state pays a $500 stipend to employees for doing that. By, by our math, it costs a person, not counting their time, to take the guardian training course, but just their ammunition, their holsters, their equipment that they need for that. We're thinking, my numbers are coming out around 1,200, give or take, is what it's costing them to be a guardian, to volunteer, not taking their time, just what they have to have. And so the state, as mentioned in the bill, they do a $500 stipend. Our district is now going to do $500 or $750, which is not a stipend. We've taken the, the hourly rate for our classified staff. We've timed that by the amount of hours that it would take to complete the training. And it actually comes to $750.28. And so we're giving them $750 that will be tied to the hourly rate of our classified staff. And, and then it can be a stipend for those people that fall in, in the certified staff. If I'm saying anything wrong on that, Tim, please correct me. We're, we're working on getting those names back in right now. January to March, we'll work through getting their concealed carry permits as well as their mental health. And then again, end of March, we'll start the trainings again for the new guardians that will be coming into the program in our school. I can tell you, I personally have witnessed and watched and spoken to those that have been working with the guardian program. Regardless of any personal biases that I might have, I will tell you, I'm very, very impressed with what the Davis County Sheriff's Department has put together, what's being required of our employees to fall within this program. It's not just volunteer and you're in. It's pretty specific on what our employees are having to do to be able to pass this certification to, to be considered a school guardian for us. That's everything that I have. I'm sorry. I know that's long and not overly exciting. Any questions that you have or anything that I can answer to school safety? Yes, please.
I know I have a question and maybe some other board members do. But so on the tourniquet train, tourniquet kits that we're going to have in every classroom, has there already been training or will there be training on the use of tourniquets?
There's going to be more training, but we currently have some really cool little arms and legs that our nurses do tourniquet trainings on currently. So we've got some really cool, we updated this year. Last year, we had really cool pool noodles that we had made into arms and legs. Weren't really good. We now have some other things that we're using. But, but our nursing department is currently doing, doing tourniquet training. And that will become a much larger training as those kits become available.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else?
We currently do have tourniquets in all, all of our AED machines throughout the district. Have tourniquets in those AED compartments as well right now. But it will be in the classrooms moving forward.
Awesome. Okay.
Yes.
And I just want to say it's really nice that Ms. Price has a question and it's so nice that she wanted to spend her birthday with, with her friends here.
Happy birthday.
Okay, Ms. Price, what's your question?
Thank you. How many classrooms do we have in the district?
Hmm, that's a good question.
That's, yeah.
It's her birthday, so you know, she had to have a good question.
Just make up a number.
We'll never know.
Take, take $2 million, divide 2 million by 500.
Okay, I gotta get my calculator.
And there's how we came to the number of locks.
Dr. Toon, could you get on that?
4,000.
Wow.
Wow.
Dr. Toon, thank you.
Okay, that was, I was just curious about that.
Approximately 4,000 classrooms at $500 per classroom to install the new, the new lock on every classroom.
Okay, wow. And then with the AED machines, do we, does it just depend on the size of the school and how many we have in each school, or do we just have one in each school? Because I know they're super pricey.
They are, but no, we, we have AEDs in every building and we have the same number in each elementary school, in each secondary school, junior high, and in each high school.
Okay.
And so there's a standard number that we have set depending on if it's an elementary or secondary building.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Was there another question? Ms. Hogan?
Okay, thank you. I just have three questions. The first one is, and maybe you, maybe you mentioned this, so I apologize. But is there a certain, at a certain point where we have to be in complete compliance with the guardian, the school guardian program? And the other question, well, one of, my other question is, is there ever any talk, and I hope not, but is there ever any talk of, in the future, of us not being able to let the kids have recess? I mean, have you heard anything of, of that nature, of like trying to shut, shut that down a little bit more? And then I would also love to know about the "I love you guys" protocol, because I don't know what that is. It sounded interesting.
Great. So on the, I have not heard, there's been zero conversation of anything with limiting recess, not, not allowing kids to still be kids in schools. The conversations that, that have been around have just been, what does that mean with whether it be fencing or supervision? What are we doing to make sure that the kids are safe when they are outside? As well as communication, how, how are these adults outside communicating with the school and with emergency resources should they, should they need them? But there hasn't been talk about doing away with recess. There's been very specific talk to what do we do to make sure that this time, that this free time for students is still a very... There's been very specific talk to what do we do to make sure that this time, that this free time for students is still a very supervised, safe time for students. On the standard response protocol, if you haven't received one of these, this is the SRP or the standard response protocol that each of our faculty and staff should have on their badges, which is is our response in any emergency situation. Our faculties are getting much better at this. And where many of our faculties are going this year, we talked about it last year briefly, but many of our schools are really getting into the reunification piece. They want to take it to that next step now that we're taking kids off campus, having parents come and collect kids. Running it as a real practice drill with parents and community, picking up their students and and showing them what we're looking to do to keep their kids safe on our campus. And so that is something that we're looking at, I've got several schools that that have those planned currently with those reunifications involving our police and our people as well as staff. And I, the third question was.
Yeah, it it's just about the compliance for the guardian program. Is there a certain date or are they being pretty lenient in letting us get that all put together?
There's, every school in the state is supposed to be compliant by August of 2025. There's currently not a penalty in place for those schools that are not compliant, as long as we're working toward compliance. So as long as we as a district are showing that we truly are trying to work through this. And again, it's another area where I think our district is, has gone ahead of many other districts in really pushing this out and saying, let's comply, let's do what we've been asked to do. So there, the date is August of 2025. As a school district, our data is, this is probably something that's going to be never ending. From people moving, people changing jobs, people changing positions, we'll be continually recruiting, training, and trying to find volunteers to work within this, within this realm in our buildings.
Thank you.
Okay, Joni?
Just for substitute teachers, how are we making sure that they understand protocols?
So substitute teachers, part of that, there's a couple of different things. First off, substitute teachers now, when they become an official district substitute, are getting the standard, the standard response protocol badge with them. Also, that will be tied into the to the panic buttons. All the panic buttons that will come into play all tie in to that with the teachers and the standard response protocol. It will bring up a message to them, this is what we're in, this is what you should do in this situation. So as it's done in a school and we have the panic buttons in place, that will pop up on devices, on computers. It will tell the teachers and the substitutes, if somebody's logged in our system, it will tell them what we're in and what they should be doing in that given situation. Yep, correct. Thank you. Did I answer that? Okay, okay.
Thank you. Ms. Barber?
Okay, so just so I have the process right, volunteers make themselves known that they're interested in being the student guard, or school guardian process.
So our teachers are cur-, or I'm sorry, our administrators, our principals specifically, are are making this opportunity available to all of their staff in their school. The law reads that it cannot be a principal and it cannot be a teacher whose primary responsibility is a classroom of students. They're giving us some flexibility in that. Our districts, we believe that if a teacher has a classroom of students, they need to be with that classroom of students. There is some flexibility with with us looking at teachers in open time, prep times, things when they don't have their class. But when they have their class, that is their primary responsibility that they're going to be taking care of.
So someone that meets those qualifications is then qualified with all the screenings that you guys help perform, then trained. And then they're officially accepted or made that. I know you went over this, but remind me what happens when they don't have someone that's volunteered or someone that they can, that can meet all that criteria in a school?
Currently, we're just documenting that the school is making a good faith effort and that all of those employees that do meet the qualifications have had the opportunity to volunteer or not volunteer. But again, we want to be very specific, it's volunteers that that we're looking for. And the qualifications aren't easy, not everybody's passing this. Our our police force to qualify in their shooting on ranges of police officers is eighty percent. Our school guardian qualification is ninety percent. And so it's it's not an easy thing for all of these people to do. And it's not a matter of, well, nice try, go get them, you shot eighty-five percent, that's a good faith effort, let's move on. They're just disqualified from the program until thanks for volunteering, you didn't meet the standard. So fantastic, really, our police departments in this county and our sheriff's office, what they've put together and the way that they're working this with their best of the best. Our guardians basically are going through a s- a many-hour course with their own personal shooting instructor that is oftentimes those instructors for our SWAT teams and our other law enforcement in our city. So it's, they're not getting paid a lot, but the training that they're receiving really is a pretty invaluable training to our employees that that choose to volunteer.
So we're just, we're just putting that list together, sending it to the state, saying we tried in every single school, here's who we have, here's schools that just don't have anybody.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, anymore?
And the and the only people that are aware of that list is myself and the school safety center for the state of Utah.
Okay, that makes sense.
Ms. Powell?
So I I was just wondering, the, you know, the county sheriff's department, et cetera, who are putting together these trainings, are they just doing that on their own dime?
Well, it's definitely been, it's definitely been an expensive venture for them as well. I don't know if they're flexing their hours on their other regular duties. But I would imagine that they're still complying with their duties that they have in the city currently. And then on top of that, they're putting in thirty-four hours into Davis School District employees. And there's twenty-five to thirty officers across Davis County that have given this time on a pretty regular basis for our employees.
So there's no money specifically coming out of the DSD pot going to them?
There's been no monies coming out of Davis School District to pay for the guardian training program at all. The only monies that we have paid as a district to this point have been the mental health assessment, which has been required and we have helped employees cover that expense previously and will continue to do so.
Okay, thank you. Okay, seeing no more questions. Thank you so much, Mr. Swanson. This was, it was very interesting and we just appreciate the great job that you're doing to help keep our kids safe.
Thanks for all that you guys do.
Okay.
Can I make a quick comment about that?
Yes.
I appreciate it, Rich Swanson is on top of it. And if that doesn't bring the blood pressure down to go, okay, this guy's in charge of it and is on top of what we're doing. It's a, it's a big job with a lot of moving parts and it's complicated to get volunteers in some of these spaces. But he's doing exceptional work.
Yes. Thank you, Superintendent. Okay, in the category of parent and community, community connections, we are excited to have Heather Linehan. She's our family services supervisor at the Family Enrichment Center. And I'll let her introduce who else is with her, but we always, as board members, we always get questions on this. So we're excited to hear about the Head Start, early Head Start admission procedures.
Thank you. Good afternoon, and we want to first say thanks for your time to the school board and superintendent. My name is, as you said, Heather Linehan, and I have been with our Head Start program for about twenty-seven years. So I have been there a while and enjoyed my work there, and I have my colleague here.
Hi, my name is Jana Acton, and I am a family advocate with the Head Start and Early Head Start program.
Awesome, welcome.
Thank you. Okay, so for our Head Start grant, it is a federal grant, but hopefully, as you know, that grant is carried by the school district. So regularly, we need to inform our school board on how we make families eligible for this program. Just to start, a little reminder that Head Start provides comprehensive services. And I'll show a little data later that will hopefully show you why that's so important. But we really try and concentrate on these four areas. So of course, the education of the child is first and foremost. We want them to be prepared to be successful in kindergarten and on. And not only the child, but their family and how their family can support that education. Then as far as health, we monitor children's well child exams and dental exams and help them find a a medical home and a dental home so that they do have that ongoing healthcare. Then community partnerships are very important, and that's how we provide services for families, connect them, and hopefully how we can help the community also and be a benefit to them. And with that circle of support around children, especially high need families and those that have low income, we hope that that can help with that success rate. So we'll go into kind of the eligibility part.
So we have several different areas that we focus on and that's called our ERSI program. And it it covers eligibility, recruitment, selection, enrollment, and attendance. That's what ERSI stands for. We'll go into a little bit more detail about it in a minute, but eligibility is basically age and income or category that they are eligible for. Recruitment, we do have an active recruitment plan, we recruit throughout the year. We have a big push for it in the spring. Our selection, we go by the highest eligibility points. And like I said, we'll go into that a little bit more later. Enrollment, we maintain a hundred percent enrollment, we are required to begin the year at a full enrollment. And then we maintain a waitlist and a hundred percent enrollment all year. And we do require at least eighty-five percent attendance, that's our our goal. Our Head Start eligibility, these are the different ways that we can, that we can qualify a family. If their income is below the federal poverty guidelines, and that is set every year. If they are a foster child, if they are experiencing homelessness or McKinney-Vento family, and any family that receives TANF funds, that can be SNAP and FEP, SSI. And those, those are the way that they, that we can make them eligible.
Okay, just a little bit of data to follow that, that our current enrollment for this year, so we are funded to have in our early Head Start, which is prenatal families up to their third birthday by September first. We have ninety-six enrolled, we have a waitlist of eighty-two families. So being on the waitlist means they've registered, they've done that whole process, they haven't come up the list as the highest need yet, so they are waiting for a slot. We are serving five foster children, twenty that are experiencing homelessness, fifty-five that qualify under one of those TANF programs. And TANF stands for temporary aid of needy families. And then children on IFSPs or IEPs, there's five. So for Head Start, we are funded for three hundred and fifty-two, we have a hundred and fourteen on our waitlist. With nine foster children that we're serving, sixty-eight experiencing homelessness, a hundred and forty-four that receive TANF, and then children that are I- on IEPs, individual education programs, is thirty-eight.
So one of the things that we do when we register a family is to assess their family needs. And we do this in a variety of ways, we do it through a personal interview and through a conversation with a family advocate like myself. They complete, we complete a selection criteria to assess their needs. And some of the examples of the questions we ask them are if they're, if they were under the age of eighteen when the parent had their first child, if there's only one adult in the home, if there are chronic health issues, domestic abuse, an incarcerated parent, if the child has a disability. And those are just some of the examples of the eligibility questions that we ask.
A little information on this selection criteria that Jana talked about, that does need to be, we take input from the community and from our policy council, from our staff. And so every year we get that input and it needs to be voted on, and then we do present that to to the school board so that every Head Start program is unique in what their eligibility or in selection criteria is. And so that kind of reflects our community. So just a little bit of data on, these are families that we're currently serving now. So through this interview process, when they registered, this is how families self-reported. So for domestic abuse, for our early Head Start, thirty-three percent said they had prior or current domestic abuse. Twenty-seven percent in Head Start reported that. One adult in the household, about forty-two percent across both of our programs are from one adult households. Incarceration of a parent is past or present also. So twenty-three percent of our families self-reported for this and twenty percent for Head Start. Substance use, and this can be prescription medication also if it is substance misuse. Seventeen percent in early Head Start said that this was something that their family is dealing with, sixteen percent in Head Start. And then mental health is a big one, sixty-four percent in our early Head Start program said that's a concern for them, and fifty-two percent in Head Start. Okay, so then just a little information, after our families register, they are put on, so all of them are put on a waitlist. And then based off this information from the eligibility, which was that income, foster homelessness, and their needs, they're given a certain amount of points. So we always take those families that are highest on their first, and that's how they get the slots in our classrooms. We enroll year round, so we have to keep the classrooms full. If there's a drop, we go to our waitlist and then the next highest one is offered that slot. And we can only enroll for the funded funded slots that we have. I know sometimes someone will call with a really high need family, and if we're already full, we do have to wait till there is an opening there. So we wanted to see if there was any questions on our eligibility and enrollment process.
I know, I had a question, and then Ms. Barber, looks like she does. So when you do have that attendance requirement, so so I'm I'm assuming, of course, if someone moves, they'll be out of the program, then you go to the waitlist. But are you very, very strict on that attendance requirement or, you know, how does that work before you go to that waitlist?
Yeah, so what the requirement is, is that we have a plan if the family is falling below that, that we're supporting them and getting resources in that family's home so that they are able to bring that attendance up. Sometimes it's a matter of education, sometimes it's transportation, and sometimes if we have tried to navigate all of those resources, it's a conversation of will this work for you right now if you're not able to attend? Because we do have children on the waitlist. But first and foremost, our priority is to teach them those good attendance habits, that just because it's pre-K doesn't mean it's just drop off, that it's important that they attend and build those habits for later.
Got it, thank you. Ms. Barber?
I was interested on the qualification that is around IEP, IEPs, can you explain a little bit more and and why that's taken into account?
That just gives them points towards this eligibility and selection. So if they have that, they could go up higher on that. And that's because as one of our mandates, we need to serve at least ten percent of our children with disabilities. And so we do coordinate with the school district, we have meetings in the summer where we get those children's names and see do they qualify more for our inclusive preschool or Head Start to make sure that they get the services that best serve their family. And just because it just shows further need for that child to have those early services.
How early are students getting an IEP put in? Do they need to have it in place?
Three would be for an IEP.
Okay.
And we usually serve about twenty percent of our children, by the end of the year we'll have that. So through child find, through the teachers' observations, we do about double our numbers throughout the year of children with IEPs because they're just identified once they're in Head Start.
That was my question, they're just so young, I wondered when that process starts.
Sometimes that's the first time they find out.
Okay, awesome, thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Ms. Powell?
So on your slide where it showed like percentage with mental health issues, was that families with an identified mental health issue or is that the students?
That's anyone in their immediate family.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, any more questions? No? Okay, we want to thank Ms. Acton and Ms. Linehan for coming, we really appreciate what you do at Head Start, such a great program, and thank you.
Thank you for your time and for the school district's support, it's wonderful to be part of the school district, we're lucky.
Thank you. Okay, in our student growth and achievement category, we have this biennial data review by Dr. Tim Best, our healthy lifestyles director.
President Gerard, Vice President Price, members of the board, Mr. Luffel, Superintendent Linford, thanks for giving me the opportunity to complete this code fifty-three G ten dash four oh two. Will you throw that other one up, Timothy, it's the, the one with all the colors on it? The one that's colored, it's got. The one that's colored, it's got pretty colors on it. Tells you how tech savvy I am.
There we go.
Yeah, that one. I pushed the wrong button. Thank you, sorry. So we've got four things to talk about on this particular report to meet this requirement. Our teen pregnancy rates, our child sex abuse data, STIs, STDs, and the number of reported pornography complaints or instances within our Davis School District. So the teen pregnancy, it's, the definition is that an adolescent birth is reported between the ages of 15 to 19. So you have to keep in mind some of these, some of the data here are kids who have graduated from our high schools and, you know, possibly starting families. But as you can see, it mimics what Mr. Luffel said in past board meetings with declining birth rates, not just amongst adults but with kids. I don't know if we want adults to have increasing rates for funding, but we certainly don't want our kids to have increases. So it's good that we do have a decrease with our teen pregnancies. 42% reported their pregnancy as mistimed, or I hate the word unwanted, but that's what it was. You know, sometimes kids make mistakes, but infants are never mistakes. So I want to clarify that. And another 25%, a quarter of them reported that they were unsure whether or not they wanted to be pregnant. Amongst our local health districts that were reporting, some of them are combined just because of the numbers. You can see that Davis County is low compared to other counties. Reached out to my counterpart in Utah County and they are just a little bit lower than Davis County. It's 4.7 births per 1,000 adolescent females, so slightly lower than Davis. But we're certainly, that's a number that I don't know how you can quantify whether it's good or not, but it's, all things considered, it's not bad with that number being as low as it is. And then you can see our specific municipalities within Davis County and the numbers within. Bountiful, Caswell, Fruit Heights are really low and Clearfield area and Hooper, Woods Cross, West Bountiful are at the high end of our birth rates. Compared with the US, you can see that adolescent birth rates across the country are declining as well. Certainly we're below the United States of America average compared to Utah. STIs versus STDs, so an example given that I put in there is chlamydia is a STI. It's a sexually transmitted infection. We use that terminology with our kids in our health classes, so it's a little clearer because it's more specific, it's medically accurate. If left untreated, an SDI can become a disease which turns into pelvic inflammatory disease caused by an SDI such as chlamydia, if that makes sense. The reported cases, and we use chlamydia and gonorrhea the most because those are the ones that are highly reported. Then you have early syphilis, PNS, syphilis is primary secondary, where it starts early, it's not dealt with, turns into a secondary infection. Let's see, our rates again are statewide, much lower than, you know, other counties. Rates of chlamydia, Utah, Idaho, certainly West Virginia, northeastern states are low compared to our southeast United States. And that's also, there's different access to healthcare in those areas. Want to point out as well, Alaska has high rates, which also kind of mimics the child sexual abuse rates, their access. Certainly the Inuit, Alusia population up there, American Eskimo, American Indian, kind of mimics that trend. Which brings in the next one is the child sex abuse cases. Sorry, this is just a sad, kind of depressive report. But our BIPOC population, Black Indigenous persons of color are higher than the United States race. The only one that, and Ms. Mercer, thank you for that question that you sent to me, some good questions that you sent. I think the, and talking with Ben Hill and his department, OEO, the multiracial, non-Hispanic is the only one that's lower than the US. And it's, I think the, we use a measurement for five of those ethnicities. And oftentimes in those surveys, the multiracial, non-Hispanic isn't included in there. Plus, you know, our demographics in Utah is not quite the same as the United States. So that's the outlier. Our overall average, we're certainly a little bit higher than the US for self-reported child sex abuse. Basically on this slide, it doesn't get reported until later in life. And there's a couple of reasons on that, the slides that are forthcoming. But most of the incidences are from people that the children are acquaintance with, parents, you know, a relative. So it's hard for these kids to report somebody that they love and trust. To that note, we do one of our strands that we really stress in our health classes and certainly other academic areas is to let kids know what trusted adults are. And a few years ago, we trusted adults in our curriculum standards with the state. We worked hard to make sure that that wasn't just parents, but it included, you know, a janitor, a clergy, custodial, it could be the front office staff, somebody that kids can trust to divulge. And this one kind of reiterates the work that our schools have done. Certainly, excuse me, the Student Family Resources Department, where I work closely with, almost nearly one in five of the incidents that are reported are from our schools. So the mandatory reporting act, that if a teacher or an employee, any staff hears something from a kid, we have the obligation by law to report it and let DCFS and the authorities look into what the kid has self-reported. The piece on the right, out of the 6,900 cases in a year, just over a quarter of those were from sexual abuse. And the lowest was just child neglect, not taking care of their kids' basic needs. At a conference regarding child abuse, reported that we are eighth in child abuse and first in sex abuse rates of children nationwide. One in four girls, one in 13 are estimated to experience child sexual abuse. That's a number we, it's just not acceptable. But all we can do is educate from our end, is educate, you know, if our staff are aware of the dangers, or it's one of the requirements that we complete every year. You know, the PCAU, I guess there's a Canvas course now, Preventing Child Abuse Utah, what it is, signs to look for, is it grooming? Is it, you know, different things that we have our staff go through as well as all of our, we have about 850 coaches in our district. And certainly they look for the same things and we train them as well to be mandatory reporters, but also to look for signs. Here's another graph with just child sex abuse cases. Utah's about 13 per every 1,000 students or children. And our, again, our BIPOC children are among the most vulnerable. Majority offenders are a parent to the victim, 77%. It's the mom or dad or a guardian, which again reiterates the fact that we have kids, they need to know what trusted adults are because, you know, if dad's doing something like this, it's really hard to, you can't really report that to your dad if they're the ones, or it's, you know, an aunt or an uncle. And, you know, it's hard to report that, which is why we also see that reporting coming in late in their, in their life. Finally, this is the number of pornography complaints reported. And this is 24, 25 sexual misconduct cases in Davis School District. We had 157 students complete the education awareness Canvas course, Safety in the Digital Era. Our district case management teams processed 20, 16 ones extortion, 21 pornography cases, and 49 instances of lewd or indecent behavior. And those run through our Student Family Resources Department. Questions?
Okay, Board, are there any questions? Okay, Ms. Mercer, do you have your hand up?
Yeah. Sorry for not asking you about this previously, but is there an update on SB 205, which was the Safe Child Project bill that requires the teaching of curriculum, of age-appropriate curriculum of recognizing sexual abuse? And can you give me any, us any update on how that's being implemented in the district? And I apologize for not asking about that previously.
No, no, you're fine. Yeah, we're waiting guidance from the USBE on that before we proceed on the who and why and all those questions that still need to be answered. But we do have, we have pieces within our K-12 curriculum. For example, in kindergarten, they start learning refusal skills. And, you know, we receive calls on parents and, you know, kids, it always seems to be relationship in nature. And our job is to educate the parents that it's not necessarily, you know, especially like in kindergarten, it's just, can I use your bike? Can I take your bike for a ride? Yes or no? If the kid says yes, great. Even if they say yes, then, and later they change their mind, then you, that's what we go with. They told you no. But, so we do have those pieces in place. But before we go to what you're asking about, we're going to wait for some guidance on this date to...
Yeah, thank you.
Make sure we're in compliance. Great question.
Okay, Ms. Hogan?
With the pornography complaints, are those complaints of seeing the pornography or receiving a text or something like that? Is that what your, is that what those numbers reflect?
Yeah, I'm going to call Director Leighton up here. That's in his lane more than mine. He actually handles most of all that, him and Director Christensen.
To address that question, the pornography is on a school device that has been tracked either through like an STS. Some of those are self-reported by parents too that have found that their kid was accessing that. But as you know, our IT department is real-time tracking keystrokes and things like that. So that's typically found in that manner.
Okay, so not necessarily the kids, they're the ones accessing it, but it's reported through a parent or through our IT department?
That's correct. And then the difference between the pornography and the sexting would be, the pornography would be the individual viewing and then getting, you know, caught or through those filters. And then the sexting is actually showing someone else or sharing an inappropriate explicit image.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, these are, these are some, oh, Ms. Powell?
Yes, sorry, maybe Mr. Leighton, this is a question, a follow-up for you again. So I was just wondering if with respect to the pornography reporting, you were saying that it's usually found on a school device. What about like if a student is using their own device, whether it's a phone or a tablet or something, if they're logged in at all, like into any district system? Are you able to track that and do you track that?
So if they were, if they were on their own personal device, but they were hooked or attached to the district wifi, then we could. But otherwise, you know, if they're on their own device and their own mobile plan or something like that, we wouldn't know unless the parent reported or someone saw them on that. So it's different than if they're on our own district device or on our wifi.
So as a follow-up, so say if they're on the district device, but they're at home, you would be able to track that?
It will show, yep.
Or if they are using their own device but are somewhere within the wife, the district's wifi and using that, you can also track that?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Okay, any more questions? Okay, some very difficult topics that you've covered. We appreciate you, Dr. Best. And you also have the Title IX Participation Expenditure Report?
I do. Let's talk some numbers.
Okay.
So this meets our requirement for House Bill 420, which is Title IX reporting, annual report. As you can see, I'll do the whole part, whole method if I were back in the classroom. The number of and type of interscholastic sports available at the school by gender, the number of students in gender-designated sports by gender, any participation discrepancy between males and females, the amount of spending that a school devotes to sports, or comparison and evaluation of designated practice game locations, and the amount of spending that the school devotes to each gender-designated sport, reported in total amount and on a per-student basis. So you'll see the data with just an aggregate summative report rather than by each sport, each gender, at each school. And then also the, if there's a discrepancy between our participation at 10% better, our schools develop an action plan to address that discrepancy. So here, and apologize, when I sent the report, Ms. Carrie Moore, it somehow got a little skewed. So I think you have reports in front of you and this is, has the boys and the girls on it, so apologies on that. So our, as you can see, this is, the top part of that are high schools. And then the girls, number of participants in each respective sport. And then the number, the data below are the student fees that were charged to the girls in each program. And so going across from the top, left to right, that'll have the schools. And then it has a school total, that's the amount that was spent. And then what I did basically is you take the amount of girls at each, at each school, the total athletes. For example, Bountiful High School has 327 girls that competed last year and they spent $295,000. And so each per sport average was $904. And so each per-sport average was nine hundred and four dollars. And surprisingly, golf is one of the cheapest sports in our high schools. I wish I would have played golf in high school because it's not cheap when you're an adult. For the boys, same thing. Let me go back one. So the total amount of girls district-wide participating, just over thirty-one hundred. Our boys, forty-four hundred eighty-five boys participated in athletics. And for clarification on the, on the, on the data that goes in, football is, per the High School Activities Association, football is non-specific sport. Baseball is non-specific. Drill and cheer are non-specific until a competition. So a boy can participate on the, on the cheer team. Other than a competition, a girl can, can play football and they can also play baseball. So those wouldn't factor into our total amount of boys and girls for the, for the purposes of the data reports. So you can see our boys range from, looks like six hundred dollars is our maximum amount showing up there to just, looks like four hundred and fifty-nine dollars is our lowest per, per, per-sport average. There's a total amount of fees that were charged and total expenses. So that includes not just the fees, obviously, that the kids pay, but that could be a donation, it could be fundraisers, just any income that comes in. A camp or a clinic that impacts their particular sport at their school. So just under eight million dollars flowing in and out. And that's, that, the district doesn't participate. Like, we don't have any money in that amount there. And then this little slide is where, that's the last piece of the equation was we have three schools that have discrepancy over ten percent. So I'll work with our secondary school directors to see where we get a plan in place to increase participation. You have Farmington is seventeen percent greater. Syracuse is right at ten percent. And Vumon has a twenty-two percent male over female participation rate. Obviously, we can't twist arms and say, go play softball. But, you know, I reached out to a couple of principals to gauge things that they do. Some things we can suggest or just making sure the tryouts are clearly posted plenty of times so nobody's surprised. The contact information for the coaches, associated information for each sport are just, you know, invisible areas so, so kids know where to go and what to look for. Active recruitment, when I say recruitment, that's within your boundary schools, not outside. Recruiting kids to participate, improving your grassroots programs such as a bantam league, depending on what that bantam league looks like. One high school principal even said they would support having a separate cheer squad that supports sports other than football and basketball. Maybe the cheerleaders are, you know, cheering out here. And the cheer support squad is kind of a go-between between the cheerleader and the student body, which would, would help increase numbers. One thing I thought of was if I have a kid that's, maybe they play basketball, I want to increase their cardiovascular endurance, I'm gonna ask them to run cross-country. You know, different ideas like that that we can do to increase that participation so the, the numbers aren't over ten percent. No questions on this, I'm sure?
Okay, Ms. Stevens has a question.
I just have a question. So do you take into account ratio of like the student population as far as like if there are a lot of male students that year?
That's a good question. Yeah, we, for the purpose of this requirement, we don't. It's just how many girl participations, you know, participants, boy participants. But certainly that's, you know, I think our schools are somewhat balanced, but it could be an issue if you have, you know, a school that has just more boys for whatever reason. But yeah, for this, to answer your question, sorry, it's just the data I have in front of me is how we come up with the difference. If that makes sense.
Okay, any other questions? Ms. Mercer and then Ms. Barber?
Mine is just a small comment that I, in, in the suggestions that are listed, I wonder if we could encourage our schools to have discussions with students about what would engage, if, if this is girls that we need more participation from, like what would engage them? Like what, what would get, and I know I've seen suggestions of, like, and some sports that we have greater participation in are ones where even students that are not necessarily competitive can participate in, in those. I'm, you know, when, if it's not necessarily a team sport, but more of an individual sport and you can bring people in who have not been doing that sport for long periods of time, but are, but are new, newly participating in that sport. So I just, I just want to encourage our, our schools. And I don't know if this is an official document of list of ways that we're working on or how that works, but, but that we are engaging our students in that process of saying like, what, what would you, what would get you to, to come out and play sports? Because I, I think we tend to, our sports tend to be a little bit of an echo chamber. So let's get, let's get the people that aren't participating to say, hey, what, what do we need to do? Rather than trying to get those that are already participating doubling up or, or doing the same things that we've, we've already done.
Absolutely. Thank you. Yeah, we'll take that all in to the notes. Great suggestion. That's another reason why our junior high programs, our sports programs are so invaluable with, you know, it's hard to manage two hundred and fifty junior high kids. Then you put them on a track team, then, but it's great. We want, we want numbers.
And I guess this is a follow-up of that. I, I've loved that even at one of our, one of the elementary schools in my area, at Woods Cross Elementary, they have a wrestling team that has, you know, gone on to the junior high that has a wrestling team. And, and that's male and female. I know that's not one of the official, I don't think that's on the list because it's not, I, I don't know how that works exactly. But just there are ways that, that are kind of outside of the, the box that, to think through that.
Correct. Yeah, it's a good grassroots program.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Barber.
First question, unified sports is counted in here. And that's, does that count for Title IX as well, same way?
Not within this report since they didn't ask for it. But certainly we could, you know, we could do different numbers just so we know the participation level.
But those, those students participating, because I saw those on, on one of them, are those numbers counting towards that, that ratio?
They aren't in this current report, no.
Interesting. And then I get, just recently got a lot of questions about this. Can you talk about the district's support of bantam leagues and how those can help feed into high school programs?
Oh, how long do we have?
When you said, mentioned it, it made me think of that. I probably should have.
No, it's a great question. We're, we're currently, we had a meeting this morning. We've had a couple of meetings. We're, we're trying to connect the dots with this. We have some schools that have, you know, held tryouts with the Utah Jazz, Bantam League. Their, their goal is to put as much money back in our schools as possible. But we certainly don't want to alienate our community stakeholders that also want our gym space. We need more gyms. We need more swimming pools. We all know that. Sorry, I want to go off on the pool thing, but...
We do.
Yeah. So we do have, and I think there's a discussion tomorrow about that. And then we've also got a follow-up meeting Thursday at one o'clock with representatives for the Utah Jazz, just so we can see here. We're speaking the same message, so to speak. So that's kind of where we are with that program.
And my last question, this one's much easier, is just on fees. Can you just clarify, Board, we, there's a limit to the fees that each school can charge up to for a certain sport, and that's across the whole district. But we don't have a limit on how much they can fundraise or how much they can bring in from outside donations?
Correct, yeah. So fourteen hundred dollars is our maximum fee that the kids can pay out. A trip, the maximum is two thousand. So thirty-four hundred would be, you know, the maximum that they would have to pay out of pocket. And then, you know, our fundraisers don't count, or, excuse me, they do count towards that, that cap on the fee amount. But then you do like a team fundraiser that may raise money for the team, but not necessarily the individual student. But, and then I think our aggregate, Mr. Lefle is correct me if I'm wrong, is five thousand dollars per kid per year. So if they're in multiple sports or activities, they, they won't pay more than five thousand.
Okay. Then my other question is, on these fees that are brought in, do these include fee waivers? So like where the school is paying that money for the student?
It, it does, yes.
All right, thank you.
Okay, Ms. Hogan?
Yes, really quick question. So if an individual plays more than one sport, you know, basketball, track, then they're counted once for each sport? So they're, they're the numbers, they could be adding three, three numbers to the boys or the girls if they're doing three different sports?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, one year we even had one student that participated in four sports.
Okay, all right. Seeing no more questions? Thank you, Dr. Best. We really appreciate the outstanding job. You too. Okay. Let's see, Mr. Chris Keim, one of our secondary directors. This is all about student growth and achievement. And Mr. Keim's gonna report on South Davis Junior High School DLI program.
Thank you. Thank you, President Gerard. Happy birthday, Vice President Price. And Board, Mr. Lefle, Dr. Linford. Yeah, my, my purpose here today is to update you on the study of the South Davis Junior High French Dual Language Immersion Program. The study was initiated by the Board in July. The, I'm here to present the findings in, in these different categories and provide a recommendation. No action is, is for today, but to provide a recommendation that outline the next steps of the study. So currently, in the French Dual Language Programs in the South End, you see South Davis on the one side and Mueller Park on the other. These are neighboring schools. And again, the enrollment currently this year at South Davis Junior High is nine total dual-language immersion students compared to a hundred and six individual students at Mueller Park. And I put a hundred and thirty-eight total enrollments. Some students take the language and culture class, class in addition to their dual-language immersion class. And please interrupt with any questions as we go along. Feeder pattern impacts. In the, in the secondary feeder pattern, the, the French Bridge program that is the high school capstone is at Bountiful High. That impacts South Davis because South Davis is a one-hundred percent feeder to Woods Cross High School. And again, with neighboring Mueller Park Junior High having the French Dual Language Immersion Program, Mueller Park feeding Bountiful High, that's a contributing factor to the challenge of South Davis's program. At the elementary school, both Odyssey and Foxborough have French Dual Language Immersion. The decision was made, I believe, a couple of years ago to sunset the program at Odyssey because of low elementary dual-language enrollments and to consolidate that at Foxborough Elementary. So that also impacts the flow of students to South Davis Junior High's French Dual Language Immersion Program. Instructional impacts. With the nine students at South Davis this year and in recent years, they have to combine those students in levels. So in, in junior high, there's a combining, and high school combining those levels becomes a challenge for the teacher and the student in preparation and pacing and learning feedback and the learning cycle that becomes a challenge. It's also a challenge with the staffing overall in a school when you have that few students and a, and a teacher that's teaching that few students. The impact on the overall FTE and the class sizes and the other areas can be impacted. Part of this process is community feedback, both in person at board meetings as well as through the digital link that the Community Relations Department has sent out. As of two thirty today, there were eight responses on this, on South Davis's Dual Language Immersion Program. Three stated a preference for Spanish over French. Two weren't aware of the dual-language program. One stated that numbers show community interest is low and acknowledged another program in close proximity. And then the, the most recent comment was highlighting how great the program was for their student and the need to promote it and communicate it and share it more.
Mr. Keim?
Yeah.
Would you be able to send us that community comment, the input that you just?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Okay.
I will do that.
Thank you.
Some of the supports, every dual-language immersion program gets support from the Teaching and Learning Department in finding, recruiting and retaining qualified teachers. That's a particular challenge in all of our dual-language immersion programs. When they're neighboring and they struggle, that's a particular challenge and, and part of the reason to consider how to be as efficient as possible. This year, the district provided half of an FTE to South Davis Junior High to help continue to run their program, even with the few students so that they can continue to do this and we could have time for this study. Based on all these things, and again, this recommendation, there's no action today as a part of the study timeline, but the recommendation to the school board is closure of the French Dual Language Immersion Program at South Davis Junior High and consolidate it with the French Dual Language Immersion Program at Mueller Park. Here, here's the timeline of the next steps of the study. I'm a history teacher. I should have done better with this timeline. It doesn't look that great. But later this week, the Community Relations Department will send out a notice to affected parents and municipalities of the public hearing that will happen October twenty-third. October seventh and eighteenth, or, excuse me, October seventh board meetings and the November eighteenth board meeting are opportunities for public comment in a board meeting setting. On October tenth, there will be another notice sent out, a Class A notice of the public hearing. And then on October twenty-third, there will be a public hearing held at South Davis Junior High. And then the anticipation is that at the November eighteenth board meeting, the Board would vote on, on this information and, and vote on the recommendation.
Okay.
What, what questions can I answer?
Questions? Let's see, okay, Ms. Price and then Ms. Palm?
Okay, so if we consolidate the program, are, are those who are interested in the dual-language immersion program, are they given an automatic variance to Mueller Park Junior High and then to Bountiful High if they want to continue with the French Bridge?
So programs, specialty programs like dual-language immersion are placements rather than permits or what we used to call variances, they're, they're placements. So they will get an automatic placement in that program pathway.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Ms. Palm?
Also, sorry, at the high school, there's a option to magnet like we do with other programs from high school to high school. If they want to attend their own high school, they can magnet to the specialty program. But they, that will automatically be granted.
They just have to get themselves there.
Right.
Transportation-wise.
Correct.
Okay, Ms. Palm?
So when you say magnet, you just mean magnet for one class versus like full placement in the school?
Correct.
Yes, so I just, can I ask my question now?
Yeah.
So just on the, on the digital feedback, how did you, how did you guys? So just on the, on the digital feedback, how did you, how did you guys recruit that feedback? Was that an email to everybody in those schools?
Yeah, so that's part of a notice that comes out from the Community Relations Department, including that link to all the affected parents and people in the municipality.
Okay. And then, then this Class A notice of the public hearing is going to be the same way? Just an email out to this?
Yes. Well, actually, traditional mail too, right? Traditional mail and email.
Okay, so that will have an additional snail mail component to it?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, so along those same lines, so that was sent just to the junior high parents? Not to the elementary school parents as well?
Correct.
Okay, so are we addressing those parents to let them know that that option will be going away at Mueller Park? Or, I mean, at South Davis?
Yeah. Because we're in the study process, we haven't communicated anything other than to the affected school and municipalities at South Davis. Since a decision hasn't been made, we haven't notified any of the feeder programs at this point.
So I think we should be, though, I think we should be notifying them. Well, definitely, we will after the decision has been made. Is that what you're saying, Mr. Keim?
Yes.
Yeah, because it's still the study period. But I, and I'm suggesting that since we're studying it, we should reach out to them since it's such a short section of time that they are in the junior high. Reaching out to those feeder schools would be beneficial in gathering their feedback.
Part of, and I don't, I'm not, I think that's great and we're, we can do that. In the elementary school, a couple of years ago, the program at Odyssey Elementary has been sunsetted, meaning it's phasing out. So we can still certainly communicate with them, but they know that that program at that school's phasing out and being consolidated with Foxborough, which is a feeder to Mueller Park. Yeah.
Can I, may I address Ms. Stevens?
Ms. Mercer?
Thank you. May I address Ms. Stevens?
Sure.
Okay. Odyssey Elementary is the only school, the only French immersion school that is feeding to South Davis rather than to Mueller Park. And if, you'll notice that there's only one seventh grader currently that came from Odyssey to South Davis. The majority of the students from Odyssey are already moving to Mueller Park. But I do think it's helpful, it's only a handful of families that we would need to communicate with and it probably is helpful to have that conversation with the families that are in the French immersion program at Odyssey that I think we have just fifth and sixth grade, or is it fourth, fifth and sixth grade still in French immersion? Does someone know the answer?
I don't know.
Tracy, yes. Yeah, fourth, fourth, fifth and sixth. Okay, thank you.
Because would it not be an option for them next year?
Tracy, go ahead and you can just answer if that's...
I yield the microphone to Director Robbins.
Okay.
When we met, when Dr. Tuna and I met with the families from Odyssey last year, there were two students at that time that were going to be impacted by the South Davis move, unless they've had new students move in, or one or two of those students have moved out. We're talking about two families.
So would it be possible to just reach out?
Of course, absolutely, of course.
I think we should.
Good suggestion. Okay, any other questions? Okay, thank you, Mr. Keim.
Thank you.
Appreciate all your work on this. Okay, next we have our elementary, one of our elementary directors, Mr. Doug Forsgren, and he's going to come and talk about Lincoln Elementary DLI first.
President Gerard, Vice President Price and Board members. I see that I've been stripped of my honorary doctorate that I received last time.
Oh, that's too bad. Well, you can still get it. Let me know when you get it.
I know there's a few people that have changed my title on their phones in contact, so we'll just, we'll go with that.
Just keep working and then just let me know.
Thank you for letting me come back and report on this to you. First, we're addressing Lincoln. First of all, and just as a reminder, the question that we had at hand is, will closing the Dual Language Immersion Program allow us to enhance the academic opportunities for students at Lincoln Elementary? And the reason for the question was as we looked at the time spent in the program, it was, it was two-point-five-three years. You know, the research suggests that more time be spent in there in order to see significant positive influence on there. And so the things that we wanted to consider as we went through the study was the enrollment data for the program. Make sure that it's sustainable, achievement data, and then the public comments, as you've heard several here in your meetings. First of all, the attrition data, we already, we shared with you the attrition data from Lincoln. As we compared that, you can see the attrition data for the rest of the programs. You can see that, that research that I, that I noted in my first time presenting to you said that the six years was, was what was recommended to get that significant, again, meaning significant positive influence. And you can see none of our programs are actually approaching that six years right now. Lincoln is, is lower than the rest, as you can see. The reasoning for the attrition is, is different. You have dropping out of the program versus moving out of the school. There's a lot more moving out of the school at Lincoln than that. But, but you can see, none of our programs actually approached that and that's something we wanted to consider looking at. The achievement data, this is specific to Lincoln as you separate the data for Dual Language Immersion students and our traditional English students. On the rise data, you can see that our Dual Language Immersion is slightly higher than their traditional counterparts in, in both English Language Arts and math and on Acadents Reading. Not, in Acadents Reading, that's both in proficiency, so meeting the benchmark as well as the pathways to progress data. So the growth data on that. And although, although whether you consider those numbers significant or not, that's not really the debate we're having. What you can see is that there is some positive influence of correlational influence between the DLI program and the achievement on, on those assessments. The enrollment data is solid at Lincoln. That's not really, and it never really was the question, although we wanted to make sure that we took a close look at it, seeing as, as some of the enrollment and some of our DLI programs is dropping. You can see it's, it's sustainable and, and again, that's, that's not really our concern in any which way. We, we received forty comments on the digital form that we sent out for people to be able to give us their input. We went and met with the staff. That's actually a singular meeting, I'm sorry, has S there. Went and met with the staff and made sure we made note of all their comments and heard them out and their feelings on it. And of course, here at board meeting, you've heard from several constituents of Lincoln Elementary. And so as general summaries to what we saw in those comments, and I'm happy to provide those to the Board as well, is it highlighted the benefits of Lincoln's DLI. A lot of those benefits were tied to, you know, cultural things, feelings of belonging in the school. And, and that gave some context to the data that we saw as well, as we saw some positive influence on the academic achievement of our Dual Language Immersion students. And then the Lincoln DLI, we really heard strongly, and you heard, I believe, the bulk of the comments that you heard here in board meeting were about the culture, the cultural awareness and enhancing, enhancing the equitable access for all students at Lincoln. There was strong support for continuing, continuing to support the Lincoln DLI program. And I say the words, I know I use the word support twice, but support meaning like maybe, maybe there's ways to strengthen the program rather than remove the program altogether. And we heard that in some of the public comments, digital public comments, as well as in the, from the staff themselves. That's the comments that we heard. So all things considered, this is our proposal to you and we'll, we'll tell you why. Our proposal to you is to go ahead and conclude this study with no changes to the Spanish DLI program through board action at the business meeting on October seventh, 2025. And so if, if that proposal is agreed upon, then we would, we would cancel all the next steps after that, including the public hearing and things like that. Now, just to give you a little background information, I was deliberate in the title of this slide because as we're, we've been studying Dual Language Immersion at Lincoln, but what we want to do is support Lincoln Elementary, traditional and Dual Language Immersion. And so these are some of the, some of these efforts are already started and that we really are anxious to see through. Some of them are just getting started and others were anxious to start to support those things. We already have a consultant working with Lincoln Elementary Schools Cubed that focuses primarily, primarily on literacy instruction, fidelity and instruction. A lot of it's frankly, a lot of coaching for, for the admin as well, kind of helping establish them as the literacy instructional leader in the building and how to do that. And so that, those efforts have, had already started, we're anxious to see those through. We feel like that's a model that's going to support many of our schools, not, not just Lincoln. The increased district support of PBIS at Lincoln, and I mentioned all tiers here, tier one, tier two, you know, in the classroom as well as school-wide and, and any little interventions that we need to do for students. Typically, when you're starting a PBIS implementation, you start at a school level, just kind of whole school. You'll have your expectations and you've been on many, many board visits where you've seen the posters throughout different areas of the building that establish those expectations, what it looks like, what it sounds like with a voice level. And typically, you're starting those and you're having a lot of school-wide rewards. With Lincoln, we, we've already met with the administration. We've taken some of our, of our behavior specialists over there, those who work with PBIS, Devin Healy and his team, the coaches that he has with him. And, and we decided that we really want to go all in on this one. And, and this is quite the undertaking, but there's resources that again, if we want to support Lincoln, this is stuff that we feel like is, is sustainable and feasible for us to be able to go in and provide not only those school-level supports for the positive behavior interventions, but also those, especially those tier-one supports in the classrooms. What is it that we can do, what is it that we can do to help the teachers really take care of some of the, the more common behaviors and disruptions in class? And just through establishing really solid expectations and really solid procedures and routines based on, a lot of that's based on the champs that we do trainings on. But we want to do that more at a larger level and then also bring those coaches in that Devin has working under him, Nicole Deaton and her, her new counterpart, to work with the teachers as well and give some positive, positive feedback on that. So again, we want to intensify that more, more than we typically do with upfront. And then the final thing is to identify and provide professional development, PD, I apologize for all the acronyms here. Professional Development on Design Elements from the Davis Model of Instruction, based on Lincoln's student needs. So, you know, as we've studied the new art and science in teaching, as we've developed the Davis Model of Instruction with the foundation of that being the new art and science of teaching, there's, there's design elements, there's design areas and elements and strategies underneath those elements that we can identify that would be particularly beneficial for us to enhance and really monitor, provide professional development on for the students of Lincoln, whether it's traditional or DLI. A lot of this you can see is just, these type of things are going to affect all classrooms, which we're very excited about. And so with all of that and considering all the other factors, that's, that's where we got to, to our proposal to conclude the study. And let's just, let's strengthen Lincoln.
Okay. Well, Mr. Forsgren, thank you so much for all of the work that you and your team, and I'm sure it involved a lot of people here. The work that you put into this study, really appreciate your diligence. And I just want to say thank you for all, all of our citizens who gave input to all of our stakeholders. And whether it was, you know, parents or teachers or those, you know, anybody that came to give public comment, we really appreciated all the input that we received. And grateful for the cooperation of the staff there at Lincoln and all that was done. So thank you so much. And I know we have another one. But we'll, I'll ask for questions on Lincoln first before we go on to Eagle Bay. Ms. Stevens?
Thank you for the work. Do you think that the attrition rate will continue to just be low always?
You're just asking my opinion on this one, right? I, I think it's hard for us to control the mobility of a school.
And that's unique to that area?
Very much so. Lincoln is, is, has the most move-in and move-outs of any of our elementary schools in the district.
And do they allow kids to enroll in that program at a later grade than most?
They do. They do. Under some, some circumstances, yes, they do.
Okay. Just curious.
Okay, any other questions? Ms. Hogan?
So with the public comment that we received, I, I had a question a little, I was a little confused. Do native Spanish speakers, can they participate in the dual immersion program? And do they, and do they gain?
Absolutely. They can and they do. And, and there's, again, just as far as general research on Dual Language Immersion Programs, the more we can get towards a two-way immersion program, which means we have native speakers, native second language speakers as well as native English speakers, the more effective the program is.
Okay, so they're, they, it's effective for them just in the opposite way?
Correct.
If that makes sense, okay.
Yeah, I mean, based, again, based on the research.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions about Lincoln? Ms. Barber?
This isn't really a question because I feel like you answered all of my questions through that. But I did, just want to say thank you. This has been, I will say, one of the more emotional things that I've faced on school board because it's a community that I care really deeply about. And I think they felt very ready to show the support for their school and for this program. And it was really impressive to see. I think, I, I hope parents that are involved feel like a win of being heard because that, that was part of the study. It's not just about numbers. And I really hope they realize that and they feel that. And, you know, walking through the school, it doesn't take very long to know that it has a unique feel. It has a very, a very strong community feel that will just win you over the second you walk in the door. So I'm glad that we can keep what's really good about the program. Do you have a question?
Stevens? But I also really appreciate that you followed the rubric that we set in place to help guide us in determining how we were going to, you know, look at these situations.
And it's a good tool for us to have going forward, yeah.
Thank you. And, and I will add to that, you followed the process. And we have great processes here in Davis School District, and that's how we do things. And we need to stick to the processes and, because we have, we have good processes. So, okay. And Superintendent?
If I could quickly add to that. I, I did, as, I try to stay on the periphery of a, of a study like this because I, I know that I'm in a position that if I put my finger on the scale, I can easily shift a study and the, and the folks that I supervise might, might lean in a, in a different direction. So I do appreciate that, and I hope that we always consider the cultural elements and all the things that are within a school. But at the end of the day, the, the data wins and I appreciate, and this is, this is my point. I appreciate that our initial blush at, at the data made us realize we have to really consider a study. To be responsible, we really have to consider a study. And then as we looked at the data, we saw that there was, there was room for much, much, a different kind of support from the district. And, and as we approached that conversation, we were also stretching and learning and growing. And so I think it's, it's, it's evidence of just a really good, in general, culture within the school, within our district and the way that we see each other and the way that we can support each other.
Thank you, Superintendent Linford. Okay, Mr. Forsgren, if you want to go on to talk about the Eagle Bay Elementary Boundary Study?
Sure. Okay, just again, as a reminder, we've asked that we can get an opportunity to study this as we have that low enrollment for our traditional English classes at Eagle Bay. We are currently, any students that would have been enrolled in first, second or third grade that wanted, that sought out a traditional English experience. that sought out a traditional English experience, we realigned the boundaries to have them go to Canyon Creek. It was a minimal number that ended up transferring to Canyon Creek at, I think it was under 10 that number affected. So, with this, enrollment in the dual-language immersion was not at question, so we don't, I don't have that data to share with you. The academic achievement for the students was not at question, so that's not data that we're presenting to you. The information from the public comment is something, again, I can share with you. We had 83 people from this study that chimed in for it. There, two of the things that were, that came out, a thread in those studies, of course, with 83 comments, you can imagine that there were mixed feelings all over the place and a lot of different suggestions. In general, there's a general support for the dual-language immersion program at Eagle Bay. And there was, there were several different comments talking about and recommending a more of a full boundary realignment affecting both Eagle Bay and Canyon Creek. Different models were suggested and different things that we had considered previous and in the previous study as well. So, our proposal on this one is essentially to continue what we've done in the 1st through 3rd grade with, again, one of the suggestions, actually, a few of the suggestions were to do a phased approach. You know, people are worried about the students who are already in the traditional English classes in 4th, 5th, and 6th grade at Eagle Bay, and so to use a phased approach. The proposal to you is a phased boundary realignment that transitions traditional English students in grades 4th through 6th from Eagle Bay to Canyon Creek Elementary by first moving 4th grade in the fall of 2026, 5th grade in the fall of 2027, and 6th grade in the fall of 2028. So we're not moving any of those students, and they can finish out their time at Eagle Bay there. The reasoning for this was, we're looking pretty strongly at the number of people that are affected by any decision that we make. The larger, the larger boundary realignment is going to affect a large percentage of both schools if we were to take some of those options into account. But we also know that from the larger boundary study that we did, the Antelope-South Study that has since been closed, that there is an enrollment decline in the south end of the district, and that it's likely that localized studies will need to be done in order to address that decline. And those localized studies will be greater than just two schools, Eagle Bay and Canyon Creek in this case. It would be, like I said, it would be greater. And the current proposal has a minimal effect on people there. Again, by allowing the kids to graduate out, essentially what were, the people that this would affect would be new move-ins who moved in closer to the Eagle Bay or the Eagle Bay boundaries for, that are there. And that would actually be the primary people that would be affected. Otherwise, those have already either moved or are being phased out, so they would not be effective. So that was, that was why we came back with this proposal to you.
Okay. So, you're still planning to have that public hearing, right?
Yes.
At Eagle Bay? I have that October 21st, correct?
October 21st, yes. And that won't be at Eagle Bay, because this is not a closure. We don't have to host it at the school. This is a boundary realignment, so that will be held here.
Yeah, okay, we'll talk about that at the end. Thank you so much. That was a good explanation. Questions on this boundary study? Ms. Hogan?
Okay, so this boundary, we're creating boundaries that aren't geographical, but they're according to the language? Is that correct?
According to, sorry, I don't...
So, if someone's in that area and they want English only, that is the determining factor of which school they will go to?
That's correct, yes.
Okay, so I, how do we create that boundary? I guess it's different than what we've done in the past.
So essentially, the boundary for traditional English would be the current boundaries of Eagle Bay and Canyon Creek combined.
Because the boundaries are right next to each other?
Correct, yes.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Oh, Ms. Powell?
Yeah, how are we dealing with busing with this?
You know, and thank you, actually, for bringing that up, because I wanted to mention that. Thanks to our Transportation Department, they came up with a very easy plan, actually, and it can be continued on with 4th, 5th, and 6th grade. It was just a matter of adding a couple more stops on two bus routes that already existed for Canyon Creek that go over there. They're adding a couple more stops picking up the kids. So it's pretty, pretty easy, actually. And so, we really appreciate Transportation taking care of that so easily for us.
It's always nice to hear it when it's easy.
Yeah, yeah, it doesn't always work out that way.
No, it doesn't. Okay, any other questions on this? Okay, great job on this. Appreciate all the work that's gone into these studies. And again, you know, we have great processes, so. So just a note to our board members then. So October 21st will be the public hearing about Eagle Bay, the boundary study recommendation, and it will be held here at 6:00 PM. And then, for Lincoln, there will be no public hearing held since the recommendation is no change to the program. But then, again, on October 23rd, so just two days later, we will have the public hearing start at 6:00 PM on the recommendations for South Davis at South Davis Junior High. Okay. Okay, wow, having reached the end of our agenda, we will adjourn. Thank you for being here.